...switch yard and it's got vegetation around it to kind of mask it from the parking lot.
So how much is that going to expand in this picture?
None, so the footprints can stay exactly the same. The only thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna take a couple of these shrubs out so that we can access the switch yard to put the equipment in there, but then we'll put them back. But the footprint of the switch yard stays the same. In looking at this picture, this large block right here is an existing backup generator. Between that backup generator and the edge of the switch yard is where we're gonna place all the equipment, which consists of four versus a switchboard and a transformer. So it's gonna transform it up from the voltage of the solar system, which is 400 volts, up to the voltage of the grid, which is 13,000 volts. And then it ties into the main switch here in the system, which is also at 13,000 volts. And we're gonna add one more cabinet, and that's this other block right here. So another like four-foot wide cabinet is gonna get bolted on there. It's gonna be made to match that piece of switch here.
In terms of emergency services, James submitted an emergency response plan. That's been approved by the fire department. As part of that, James, you're gonna have an information box where you're gonna have a copy of the ERP along with plans and what was the other item? There was something else?
Contact information.
In contact information, in case there was an emergency and they needed to use that information. And then you also are gonna have an orientation with the fire department, police department, and any other emergency personnel that need to know how to turn the system off.
Yep.
We talked about lighting. There's no need for additional lighting signs, advertising. No need for any additional signs. Utility connection, you said it's in basically an offline system, correct? It doesn't sound like it's gonna be, you're not gonna be transmitting power from the panels on the building to the grid. It's just, the grid, National Grid is basically in a meter. Meter, and that's it, correct, or?
Well, it'll tie in what's called a behind-the-meter system. So National Grid's meter is on a pole, it comes on a pole off of Main Street. And right about maybe fifty feet off the road, they have a pole-mounted meter. And then from that meter to the rest of the electrical, it is all owned by the customer. So that's what's called the point of interconnection, the point of common coupling with utility. So everything on this side is what's called a behind-the-meter system. And all this equipment, all the lines that are buried underneath the parking lot here, and all this switch gear is owned by Paragon Holdings. So we'll integrate into this, and so we'll be serving the building's needs. But, you know, the way the grid works is that it's all connected together. So at times of like peak solar generation, let's say it's a holiday or something like that, Paragon's not using a lot of power, the energy will flow back to National Grid through that meter. And it'll credit Paragon's account, and then we'll come back. But there's no additional physical connections to the grid, but it's all like tied together.
So there's just that one connection at that each a little?
Yeah.
So it's roughly one megawatt?
Uh, yeah, a little bit more.
How much power do they use?
Uh, so this will supply, I think it's about seventy percent of their annual usage.
And how big is the one?
Oh, that's more like five megawatts.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Five megawatts?
It's close to five. It's like 1.95 or something.
Oh, really?
And that's, that's a year? How much it produces a year?
Yeah, the megawatts are kind of like a...
It's equivalent load, right?
Yeah, it's like the, kind of the equivalent of like how fast a car can drive. And then kilowatt-hours is what you use in a year. And that's like the equivalent to like how many miles a car drove. So this system, which is about a megawatt, will produce about 1.2 million kilowatt-hours a year. And the larger system will produce almost like 60 million kilowatt-hours a year.
Any more questions?
Anything else?
So we need to close the hearing?
Well, there's two other things maybe you wanna just discuss quickly. Typically for the ground-mounted solar systems, we have a surety posted, or if the system gets abandoned and they need to, you know, restore the property, remove the panels to restore the property, if that's not the case, so I don't think the surety is needed, but I think we should at least say that it's not needed.
When are they typically used, sureties? What's different about this, that the owner owns the equipment?
The owner owns the building, yeah.
So we treat it almost as a fixture to like...
It's part of the fixture to the building, yeah. It's a little bit different. We don't...
So Bolton Orchards?
Yep.
Bolton Orchards, the trust is leasing the land?
Yeah, okay, alright.
And a different entity putting on?
Yep.
So it's to make sure that Bolton Orchards isn't left with the facility there? And that we aren't, you know, we aren't letting it out of the town?
Okay.
That's why we have it for that.
And in the case of this project, if Paragon was, let's say, ABC LLC Corp. owned the property, Paragon was the tenant, and the solar company was working with the tenant of the old, it would be a little bit more akin to the land of Bolton Orchards, but here, both entities are the same.
Yeah, that they own it, that they own it, and I guess that it's part of the structure?
Yeah, okay.
You know, having a huge solar facility and a huge, in a field?
Yep.
Just kind of manned in?
On a land lease with somebody else, yeah, no.
Manned in?
That makes sense.
But, you know, I'm open to hearing other points that you want to make.
I think that is common sense.
You know, it wouldn't be great to have the building across the street, kind of like kind of abandoned?
Sure.
With solar on top, but I guess it just doesn't have a significant impact. It's abandoned. So we have a motion to oppose the hearing?
I'd make a motion that we close this hearing for the applicant relative to 41 Main Street?
Second.
On favors say aye?
Aye.
Any against? And then we're looking for a motion to approve a special permit?
A motion that in accordance with the Code of the Town of Bolton, section 250-26, we grant the applicant with special permit relative to the protocol of all take renewable energy system being proposed for 41 Main Street?
Second?
One second.
On favors say aye?
Aye.
Any aye? Any against? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
So James, just a few things.
Yeah.
You guys wanna rock some handshake tonight?
We're gonna get a handshake.
We're gonna get a handshake. If I were to close this, it's like giving my dog a...
That's hard to count. I don't think that can really be counted as a fucking...
Yeah, that's...
Is it ten?
No, the whole is right here, so that's... That's your thing, so I think...
No, no, no.
I just wanna see it. I wanna talk about it, where I wanna see this like... I think that's quite... Not bad.
Oh, did you go really...
No, 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 just type it out. I'm sure it was enrolled 150 years ago. It's not a road now.
Oh, so they get to claim that as from the...
And this is... Williamton House, 228, 237.
Yeah.
If they, that's very interesting, because that's the powers of... If these people want to, then you have all sorts of...
Go ahead, think ahead. This doesn't...
I don't know.
I would say...
Every lawyer...
Mike has said that.
Yeah.
We could...
Love a lawyer, he's a lawyer. You can't get a four-wheel drive up there. You'd be an ATV.
That's considered, like, trying to walk that trail, so therefore it is not a road.
Right, yeah, and then...
If you're looking...
That spreadsheet, I saw this property in 2337, we did a package. It's not a half mile on Main Street, but it goes...
See, you're...
A little car for it.
This isn't a town hall, this is a...
This is a great road.
Yeah, I bet.
I know it here. We used to do all of those trails.
Yeah, that is not a road.
No. So you...
But it's a real tapestry.
That's a real tapestry down there, though.
Never knew that had... But it's not a road.
It is cool up there.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it is. Thank you.
But it's not a road.
I mean, I expect some imagination of that.
I've got some suspect stuff.
Alan, are you along?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What, ATV certainly does.
We have a couple of...
It's over seven forty-five.
We can do the extensions, bud.
Do you know where here?
Eric, this is a chance to review. So it's after 7:45, so our next item, we're meeting with Alan Shoket. He's a lawyer for Andrew Beddington and Merchant Financial Investment Board related to Century Mill Estate subdivision. A few items we wanted to discuss. I think the first one was discuss the hours of operation. Also reviewing our engineer's report. Fred Hamway, his inspection requirements, and then... Lawn reduction for roads, A and B, it's kind of the final item. So why don't we start? Erica, if you're gonna catch us up on kind of what's been going on in terms of the hours of operation?
Sure. Basically, the town's been receiving complaints about the hours of operation. I know Andy's under the gun to get a lot of different things done, and I know the police department's been contacted on numerous occasions at this point, with calls coming in at like, you know, seven o'clock at night, that construction's still going on, and the noise is an issue. So that's why I put on the agenda. I feel that the planning board at this point needs to address it with Andy and maybe come up with some type of solution moving forward so that the town doesn't have to keep getting these complaints, so.
So are the complaints in the evenings or the mornings or...
No, they're not in the morning. They're typically in the evening.
Are they from residents or from people outside of CME?
Outside of CME.
Yeah, it's not the residents.
Yeah, it's not the residents.
And the residents are very...
Contender, okay.
And what is our agreement?
So I can...
Sorry, it's from the neighbors.
Yeah.
The adjacent.
Yeah, the abutting neighbors.
Yes. We were, yeah, we were talking about, yeah, abutting neighbors rather than residents who live in the...
Alright, that was...
But we will definitely get to you and listen to what you have to say. We're just getting the background.
What's the nature of the, like, the noise? Trucks driving by, is it jackhammering? I mean, is it actual...
I'm not sure. It's construction activity. They may be able to speak to it, but...
So there is, with this development, you know, built into the agreement, there are hours of operation, even though we have a need to address that in terms of the development wasn't raised.
Okay.
For all projects, and this one, it was negotiated.
Okay.
Maybe we can just, well, Erica looks for that. Why don't we start with your experience, if you could identify yourself, take one of the time?
Rob Colbrigers, 62 something, we're hearing two summers ago, it was till 7:15 at night, jackhammering and construction vehicle, beating, you know, backup DVD, so just on the way. And it's, there's been a number of times when it's been after five o'clock where there's lots of noise going on.
So you're talking about where they've created, is the noise coming from the new entrance on Century Mill?
Yes, we're the long, we're the back lot. There were two hundred people in our house. If I go out standing in our backyard, I can see the yellow...
You guys the long shared driveway?
It's a long shared driveway.
Okay.
Do we have that line?
Okay, okay. I think, I'm thinking of a different one.
There's a, oh, that one that goes, it's, yes, we're front and down for June 5.
There was a house that had a ton of white pine out front that got...
We're the long driveway next to...
Okay, gives me respect.
Yes, so, you know, the way the land, the development comes, there's, we're here, the development entrance is across the street from these...
Yep.
It goes up.
I've got a plan for it.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
So we're...
It'll work.
So this is the entrance over here.
Okay.
There's Century Mill.
Yeah, but that's, there's nothing up there. There's no entrance there.
No, this is where...
This is where action is started.
This is our house. Destruction's going right in here.
Right.
You can't be over here. That's, that's open space.
No, that's your yard.
We own this.
That's, we own this.
This is the open space.
This is, we own this land.
Our house is right here.
The house with the white pines I was talking about, you meant like...
Down there.
Right?
Yes, and we're the long driveway next to it.
Yeah, no, that's only one house, okay.
And so where, where do you live?
I am directly across from the entrance here.
Oh, okay.
So there's a part, a road that they have been using to access this area.
They're putting the culvert in over here.
Right, and so they have cleared all of this, where the road is gonna be here. They've cleared, clear cut all of this, and they've been grinding and... Grinding and smashing orders. Yeah.
They might be all sudden, they might have had an MRI machine. It's a little quieter than that.
We'll just pause for a second. Did we find that, Erica?
I did, yes. So the condition regarding the hours of operation is item number 16 in the amendment of the subdivision approval. And it basically states during construction, the applicant shall conform to all local, state, and federal laws, including but not limited to those regarding noise, vibration, dust, and blocking of town roads. The applicant shall at all times use all reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area. Construction shall not commence before 7:00 AM on Monday through Friday, and shall not commence before 8:00 AM on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. It shall not create a nuisance as reasonably defined by the board beyond 5:00 PM. For this condition, construction activities shall include but not limited to startup of equipment or machinery, delivery of building materials and supplies, removal of trees, scrubbing, clearing, grading, filling, excavating, import, export of earth materials, installation of utilities both on and off the site, demolition of existing structures, removal of stumps and debris, and erection of new structures.
I guess there is a little bit of area for interpretation where it says, shall not create a nuisance. So I guess this is how you define the nuisance, this kind of work?
Yeah.
So maybe...
There's some ambiguity where it says, you know, as reasonably defined by the board. That's why I think we should have this discussion today, so.
Well, this would be a good point to get the complaints detailed.
Okay.
So a nuisance to me is, I understand he's a businessman and he has deadlines to meet, and frankly, I was going to give him the benefit of the doubt until it was clear to me that he was lying with the neighbors and obviously getting away with whatever he could get away with, and...
Could I address that?
Yes.
Wait, wait, let's just let her finish.
I apologize.
So this one week in particular, about three, four weeks ago, working all week long, bang, 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 bang. Beautiful, you know, summer week, you'd like to be outside, all weekend long. I guess we worked long hours, like, the only time we got together is the weekends. Sunday night, we're sitting on our porch, lovely summer evening, bang, 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 till 7:15. We actually had to go, and we went and cut ice cream because we couldn't handle a week of that.
And that's when, the next day, we talked to the police?
Yes, and, and, yes.
They said the hours of operation are between eight, or seven and five on the weekends, basically, and then eight to five on the weekends. And so at that point, you know, if he's violating, you know, exceeding those deadlines, then we're gonna start complaining, because it's, it is a nuisance to have, it's a noise nuisance, and we should get at least some respect for that.
I'll just say one thing. Another thing that the police told me was, well, yes, we understand, so, and you should definitely call the police, but, you know, don't, don't call it 10 after 5, because, you know, he has to clean up, but... And I said, okay, that makes sense, and then the more I thought about it, it doesn't make sense. If he knows it takes half an hour to clean up, then he should start cleaning up before 30.
So basically, at 5, the construction engines should turn off? That's, that's our point of view.
Could I?
Wait, yeah. So just, what are the kind of quiet activities that can go on after...
I think, I think Andy should probably address that. I don't know that I'm...
Okay, well, we, so, would you like to talk?
Sure. So I live directly across from where the development's gonna come out.
What's your name?
Alisa. And on numerous mornings, I sense more than mornings, because when they started clearing on my side, right across from my house, the machines would get there about six, so the trucks that would carry the rubble to the other side would get there about 6:30 and start their engines and rest out right there on the morning. And then they would start working, right, sometimes right at 7:00. There were one or two mornings where I was sitting at my porch having a cup of coffee, and at 6:30 they started up. And there were a couple of mornings where I called the police, and they came, asked them to turn off the machine, and they did. And then they'd start up, but it seems like they would adhere to the 7:00 and then start pushing it back. So it'd be 7:00 one morning, and the next morning it'd be 6:05, and 6:40, and then, you know, work gets a bit back, and then I would call again, then go back out, and then start over. So, you know, for us, we have a young child, he wakes up at the sound of, you know, machines running, so there goes my half-hour quiet morning, you know, quiet in the mornings, and then I've got my day started. So I know that our next-door neighbors also had issues because where the trucks are coming out off of the kind of makeshift drive that's going up there, that's where the trucks would sit and kind of hum until they went up. And that drain was blocked for quite some time, so there was a lot of flooding issues. Right there, it has since been cleared, and the drain is visible now, but they have a lot of policy boxes down there all the time, and so it was kind of tracking it out, and those, things like that. I know they couldn't be here too many, but they wanted that first.
So is there, is there a site manager that the police, when the police are called, do they contact a site manager? Is there one site manager on the site?
So Andy Ben Nelson is the site operator for the project, so I assume that the police contact Andy, and...
Are you there every day?
Could I give you a little context?
Sure.
You, you phrased it, trying to get away with, that was the term we used. There's a bigger picture here. And that has to do with permits expiring, the conservation commission, has to do with very limited timeframes to get the culvert in before we run out of time, we weren't allowed to go in until early. We, we had a conservation restriction, nudge to conservation, order conditions that was gonna expire in a few weeks from now, and in September, we finally got it extended at our last meeting. And there's been a lot of pressure exerted as a result of stuff like that, that if the work didn't get done, we're out of luck. And not to, not to, the inconvenience that you are dealing with, I'm not making light of that. I don't want to make light of that. But it's not a matter of trying to get away with it. It's a matter of the difficulty of trying to conform with the permitting process and the very limited timeframes provided to get work done under the restrictions provided by the conservation commission. And that's really what it's about.
Well, as...
And as a result, all of this stuff should evade in the coming weeks. I don't know what the timing is to get the culvert in, and, you know, I mean, we still don't really have the conservation extension. Well, we should have it. We really should have it, same, yeah. It's coming.
Just to give you...
What is the culvert?
It's a, it's like a bridge.
Oh.
I've been working seven days a week now, for four months.
We couldn't start this until July 1st. That was the first part of the...
I, I don't wanna work seven days a week. We, we requested an extension of our conservation permit a year ago. We requested it a few months ago, and we couldn't get, couldn't get it. That put us in a terrible position because if the permit expires...
And we don't have work there?
I have millions of...
Project's over.
And risk is a problem. So what we had to do, because we haven't had an extension of the permit, is put ourselves, try to put ourselves in a position where work is done, so if the permit wasn't extended, we would need the permit at least.
Have they not addressed your request, or are they haven't decided?
At our most recent meeting with the conservation commission, which was in the last week and 10 days, we, they...
Well, let me...
Go ahead.
I, I sent out a letter, let me finish. So in order to get this stuff done, I've had to rent equipment, because I don't have enough equipment to get all this stuff done. And again, I'm sorry if it blew up, but you know, I'm just trying to give you...
A little background, what's really going on.
We rented equipment that cost us $25,000, that we wouldn't have had to have done. We're paying overtime to our employees because they're working Saturdays and Sundays. This lack of the extension of the permit has cost us several hundred thousand dollars. Why, why wasn't the permit extended earlier, like in the normal course of business, and why did it wait until a few weeks?
Yeah, I don't think anybody asked that question, so...
I'm just, well, I wanna give you a little context as to that one.
Yeah, sure.
Well, that's also part of the risk of doing business.
Exactly, but I think...
That doesn't give you the...
Right.
Ability to ignore the rules that you've also agreed to by laws.
But I think your husband and we both have run small businesses, nothing compared to what he does, of course, and, you know, can live by the rule of business, which you either make it or you don't. And I'm sorry, you know, but...
I think that the permit could have been extended.
Well, that's not...
It shouldn't have been.
That's...
That's not their concern, though.
Although, you know something? To be fair, we have a permit that we're gonna be extending tonight, which is way in advance of its expiration, okay? And that takes pressure off of us in relation to the project, in relation to our institutional lenders, and getting this interrelation to the new people who are living there. Because of the lack of receiving this permit from the Concom, that has forced us to take measures that shouldn't have had to been taken. So, again, not looking to inconvenience anybody, but we were put in quite a pickle, really, and it really wasn't right. But it's...
Yeah, not really. We even sent the planning board to address...
Absol- absolutely.
The Concom is not subordinate to us, so...
Absolutely.
And you appreciate the background, but...
Yeah, it shouldn't have happened.
The hours of operation...
We shouldn't have had to have been in any of that position to have to deal with any of this stuff, and that's just the way it came down, so. But your point is certainly...
So, you know, to me, that, you know, that you can work five, you know, seven days a week on site within very generous hours, you know, I just, you know, that... you know, I just, you know, that, that the residents around this development don't even get Sunday off, you know, from the noise. So basically, it's just their eve, their summer evenings, you know, that's what I'm thinking about. Summer evenings, everybody gets home, it's dinnertime, but you guys are still doing your stuff. And that's, you know, chainsaws, jackhammers, so it's basically like you're living in, uh, you're living in a construction site in the city, or in some type of war zone. So it's, it's very inconsiderate, you know, there, those are a lot, seven days a week, you know, to work.
Also, I mean, this, you're just starting this section of the project, you're gonna be there for a while, you know, so, building houses, so...
Right, but with the, frankly, with the permits being extended by the planning board, with finally an extension from CONCON, there's not gonna, and getting the culverts in, there's not gonna be the same type of, um, uh, threat of losing the permits to finish this project. They're not gonna have the sort of daily thing going to happen, which is what we've had for the last few months.
From your conversations with Carol, does she have an issue, a specific issue? It might not be appropriate to talk about this now, but, uh...
No, things are moving forward for them.
They are moving forward now?
Yeah, we're always doing it.
No, I, I'm pretty...
I mean, do you feel more like bureaucracy, or, or it's substantive issues?
Let's, let's not go there.
Okay.
Uh, but the, the bottom line is, we do have a platform to forward on them, and we're almost, but it's, it's not done yet, but we're almost there.
My concern is, the town as a whole, the citizens as a whole, not a couple of houses, and I, I hear your, I hear your complaints, but looking at this large piece of land, seeing it as a very clean, successful development to date, but a long way to go, too, and wanting to get it done. If we wind up with, because of any litany of issues, whether it's a permitting delay, or financial concerns, or whatever gets caused by whatever influences, if we wind up with a project that's not complete, the town has an issue.
That's right.
So, but at the same time, on the flip side of the, the coin, there are hours of operation, we gotta try to live within them. I wonder if there are things, this might be naive on my part, are there things that can be done that are very quiet hours of operation, that kind of fit within that code, from five to seven o'clock?
In other words, items that are not, um...
Quiet activities, as my mother would say.
I think this issue's gonna be correct.
Yeah.
By nature of, you gotta call and you have work in progress, you're getting stuff done.
Having the per, not having the permit, uh...
Well, it's, it's, it's a regulation, I think, like, if you didn't wanna work past five o'clock, you should have to have some type of exception or something, I don't know how...
The bottom line being that the issue presented that was causing the big rush should be going away
Okay.
in the next week or so. It should be, it should be, should be dealt with and resolved, but bottom line...
So you're admitting that you've been working outside...
I have, I'm not admitting, I'm just saying...
No, you're admitting you're working outside of the regular hours.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying if...
Andy, are you admitting that, that you've been pushing your team and you've said, you know, I want you here earlier, and I want...
We don't start until seven.
That's not true.
It is true.
I had called the police at six thirty.
It's not my, it's, it's not my people.
Who are the people across the road that have been riding trees all summer?
They should not, again, that's not my people here.
Yeah, but you're, you're the site manager.
I'm unaware of when he starts.
The buck's about to drop.
I mean, it legitimately, I'm just, uh, I'm aware, I can give you my cell phone number, uh...
But when, when do you, when do you get on site? Because, you know, if you're the site manager and we're starting at seven, you should be there. And you should be responding if there are complaints. So are you pulling it, when do you, when are you there?
I'm there, most, as I said, I'm there, seven days a week, and he's there.
Are your subcontractors aware of the hours of operation?
Yes, of course they are.
So they understand that they can't start before seven AM?
Yes, yes.
Can you, can you reiterate that to these people?
Yes, please, seriously, I, I will, but I, I...
You have to take responsibility for everybody who works on the site as a site manager, that's what site managers do. So, you know, you can't say they're not my guys, because you have hired them, that would contract them.
As I said, I'm unaware of any staff before seven.
Okay, but I think the police and the abutters, you know, would disagree with you. So, you know, taking responsibility is important. And being on site is important when operations are started, so that if the police are called, you're there, they talk to you, you talk to your guys, it stops. So there've been other issues, though, you know, so this is, this is the noise issue. So, you know, you're, you're doing loud work outside of, you know, the hours permitted. Then there've been issues related to traffic, can you go through those, Erica?
Yeah, um, I don't know that we've received complaints recently about the traffic. Andy did install a couple of temporary traffic signs that basically say, uh, um, construction vehicles lose caution. And basically, he's installed them on, um, Spectacle Hill Road and on South Bolton Road. I know previously, the police department did receive complaints about construction vehicles on South Bolton Road going too fast. Um, I know at one point, there was an altercation between a resident and a construction, um, driver.
So in that altercation, the driver got out?
Got out and addressed, yeah, and basically approached the resident, and they exchanged words, and the police was contacted. So, um, since then, I think that issue's, um, I don't have to complain. I, I believe you're, you should be, you should have been aware of it, um, the police told me that they, um, contacted you about it, so...
And the signs?
And the signs have been put out, so...
So who is below Andy, who's, who's your second in command? What's their title on site?
She has a role as...
So, second in command, my understanding is that it's, um, Hanu or, uh, Paul, Paul Jamano, who is your builder, correct? And Hanu is your site? Okay, um...
So what, what's the hierarchy, Andy?
I mean, I, this was established at one of our first, um, construction meetings. Um, basically, we agreed that Andy would be our first point of contact through Allen, um, for the site. So, we lifted it back.
Yeah.
But, you know, on a regular basis, when we are out there, you know, we can have conversations with Hanu or with Paul if we see them in the field, but typically, it's, it's with Andy.
Yeah, just who you're delegating, when you're not on site, who are you delegating your responsibilities to? Any other comments from the, uh, audience or other board members?
I have a question. Uh, we received a blast notice, they're gonna blast through the ridge across our street. Um, and it was supposed to start July, November first, was what the blast company said? Or you, you must know this, right?
Uh, I was, the, the blasting company, I didn't know if they had, they, um, we had no shot, we, or blast.
We received a pre-blast survey, and they came up to check the house and everything. Um, and one of the things they noted was that I have a glass, I collect glass. And so they noticed that because of probably some shaking and everything, I should have the glass off of the shelves. So I'm curious if we're gonna get a known swindler actually going to blast, so I can go ahead and prepare the house ahead of time, instead of coming for it as I knew. I have a blast, so I'm gonna do that.
So...
Also, on the hours of operations, um, is there any, like, course of action the planning board can take? Not release, spots, or, I don't know, like, how the process works?
Well, I think at this, this point, I would recommend actually establishing a, a set hour, hours of operation, because at this point, I think it's a little too ambiguous, and, um, it's either, you know, seven to five, seven to six. It's something that, that everyone can agree to and move forward with. At this point, it's, you know, it's from seven to five, with activities beyond five that are not a nuisance to the residents, but obviously, that isn't the case, and it has been a nuisance. So, um, I think something a little more firm should be established at this point.
So how is it defined in the last part of it?
For the construction activities?
Yeah.
Uh, startup of equipment and machinery, delivery of building materials and supplies, removal of trees, scrubbing, clearing, greening, filling, excavating, import or export of earth materials, installation of utilities, both on and off site, demolition of existing structures, removal of stumps and debris, and erection of these structures.
So, you know, that's, that's very comprehensive to me, that those, all of those things stop. They start at seven, they stop at five during the week, and they start at eight, and they stop at five on the weekend.
So I mean, they're, they're, you know, you guys are saying, well, it's just, it's just, it's just for now, you know? That's very kind of open-ended, and I don't think that, you know, I don't, I don't know what our course of action is, but you can't go past five, I don't know. That's what the regulations say, unless, unless we give some type of exemption, like, you know, some type... I don't, I don't know if you can add some time period exception, or, I don't know. But I mean, what they're saying is like, oh, well, we're just gonna do what's to be done, but they're gonna be working there for a couple of years, so...
Well, I think moving forward, you know, if, if this continues to be a problem, then they're not in compliance with the permit, basically. And that, that's the issue.
But Erica, what do you, what do you recommend in terms of tightening it up?
I, I would suggest that the board just says, hours of operation are seven to five, and you need to meet, be, uh, ending at five. I think that would resolve most of the issues. I think it was a little more ambiguous, though. With the intent of whether or not it's a nuisance.
This is something, and I don't know if I'd be really supportive of that. I mean, that, that's taking the special permit and it's tightening it up at a time when it's crunch time, and it's in the town's desire. It's always gonna be crunch time, that's not what I'm...
Not, not really. No, no, because, um, the, I mean, I know you guys know, you know, big chuckle what's going on, but the culverts are significant issues. Because, because of natural heritage, they had to be built within a certain time period.
Because of the conservation...
Conservation, no, but that's, that's a separate issue, I mean, you can only work on...
No, it's the conservation commission permit, that...
July one through...
It's the conservation commission permit expiring in two weeks.
Yeah, in September.
Has been, uh, a tremendous risk for millions and millions of dollars, you know, and I, I... Permit was voted to be extended, I had, I sent out a letter to all the residents in my development, and asked for their help, and they nice enough all come to the meeting, it's probably the only reason that they, they finally got it, but, um...
How's that, what, what percentage of that culvert is done? Like, are you on tractor?
It's, it's, yeah, uh, it's not so much that we need to have the culvert done, we needed to have the culvert done before the permit expired. So the conservation commission voted to extend the permit, subject to Carol, um, walking the wetland line and agreeing that it hadn't changed. She's done that, I'm just waiting for the actual, and she agreed.
But there's no way you can get it done in two weeks, is what you're saying?
If I had to.
Oh.
It sounds like they're saying this issue will resolve itself, and the other side of it is
Right.
that ambiguity after five PM was essentially goodwill, and the goodwill is gonna burn, and there isn't any left. And since it's been extinguished, it was there and now it's not. And so I personally wouldn't have a problem with being more firm with the five PM deadline, since they've had that goodwill previously, and these issues should be resolving themselves anyways, so let's hold the whole thing to it. And I don't think there's any problem with that, since there's been a long leash already. And, and they've, and they lived it, bought houses. I would be upset, I, I mean, I was upset when I moved it up at Sunset Ridge, and there was construction all day and night, all day and night, and it was addressed. I understand the schedules for sure, but I think the residents have to come first.
So, um, so in term, in terms of that, you know, setting the time, you know, setting that, what are we doing, voting on that?
I think, let's just take a vote, eh, on the hours of operation, and then just see how that goes.
Well, so what's, so what's the consequence, if we get more complaints?
Well, he's not compliant with his permit, so...
Well, I'd also like to hear from the two of you, that you support, you know, enforcing this. That, that you're on board, you support this idea, you wanna get along with the abutters, your neighbors, that you're not against it, you understand, you're not against it, that's what I'd like to hear.
I'm not, absolutely not against it, I don't wanna work seven days a week.
But it's not about you, it's, do you understand?
Can I say something? I think that if I have an issue, you should consider it, too, as well as their issues. I mean, I don't think it's...
You're able to work seven days a week, many hours a day.
I'm talking about the permit problem that I have.
No, that, that's with, that's with conservation, and I'm sure if you need more time, hopefully, you can work it out with them. But, you know, we're talking about the hours of operation, and, you know, the noise, the nuisance that you're creating after hours, before hours.
We don't, we don't really work...
Let's just, let's put it over...
The bottom line, eh, that we certainly could...
I agree, we should be, I don't have a problem, I don't wanna have...
The thing, I mean, you're even allowed to work on holidays, it sounds like, if you wanted, I'm sure you don't.
I don't.
If you, if you wanted to.
You're just under a terrible situation.
They can, yeah, eight to five.
You're just in, under a terrible situation, and, uh...
Maybe working on Monday, or maybe we're...
So do we have a motion that would, uh, enforce the, uh, development, you know, the time schedule and the development agreement as, you know...
Make a motion that we solidify the time, are we saying the seven to five and eight to five still?
Yes.
Seven to five during the week, Monday through Friday, eight, or Saturday, seven to five, eight to five?
Saturday, Sunday, and holidays are eight, eight to five.
So Monday through Friday, seven to five, and Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, eight to five. Uh, with no ambiguity in the statement, so would we be changing this?
No, I don't, no change here, no, no.
So it's, yeah.
Because it, the, basically, the way that the, the, uh, condition we're in, it gives the planning board the option to change, yeah, to change it.
So, so we're enforcing that?
Those hours, and saying nothing beyond five PM, but you're just, um, defining what it is.
So I'll make a motion that we solidify the hours, seven to five, Monday through Friday, and eight to five, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. With no work going on outside of that.
Nope. Destruction.
No work as listed on...
No work as listed in the current agreement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
I wish, you think it should be like heavy equipment, like if there's a painter there or working or something like that?
Doesn't say anything about...
Yeah, that's outside the scope there.
Like, it could be something with an internal combustion engine, you know, if someone's painting, or even... So reasonable, where it should be, yeah. Fourteen little dump truck across the street, that falls in.
I just wanted to clarify.
The guilt concern.
Finish carpeting, really?
Well, you know, because the...
I think the streetspeople would be fine, a couple of us would be fine.
The flooring people come at night.
Yeah, but by definition, they're in walls.
Right.
Imagine if it would be causing any issues, right?
Okay, so, um, we can move on to Fred Hemway and his inspection requirements. Okay, so, um, we can move on to Fred Hamway and his inspection requirements.
So I provided a copy of a letter that I sent to Andy on August twenty second in regards to the bond reduction for Road A and B, and it outlined, um, Hamway Engineering's inspection requirements, and I just wanted to go through it with the board. Um, basically at some of our construction meetings, there's been disagreements on how often Fred Hamway should be out there, what Fred Hamway's reviewing. Um, so just so that we're all on the same page, I think we should go through this list together with Andy here so that we know moving forward, uh, what Fred's requirements are. So let's see here. Um, basically Fred Hamway requires a forty-eight hour notice prior to inspection. Uh, his inspection approval is required before the following road and drainage items, uh, not limited to, are considered compliant with municipal and subdivision rules and regulations before, before subsequent construction activities can commence. So, uh, these items include subgrade material, common fill material, retention bees, and post-drainage systems, which include catch beats and sand holes, corroded mortar joint, fuel rubber joint, pipe bedding, plate pipe, backfill material, castings, water lines, gravel base material, binder pavement, finish pavement, loam, seeping, landscaping, well line crossings, sidewalks, and graving. So basically, you know, Fred just needs to be notified, um, anytime any of these items are being installed.
So what, what has been happening?
Well, I think this was stemmed from the fact that, um, I had requested additional funds for consultant services and Andy disagreed with the amount, so, um, he questioned how often Fred was out there and why he needed to be out there. So I just wanted to basically go over these items, make sure that we're all on the same page, and, um, that's sort of how this came about.
Yeah. So, um, so is everything paid out?
No, Andy, at our meeting this week, Andy had said that he was gonna submit a check tonight for the consultant services.
Um, so, so Fred, Fred Hamway is, is, basically, he's representing the interests of, of the planning. He's representing the planning board and the interests of the town. So he's going out to inspect how the road is constructed, how the drainage is constructed. All the things that when, when Century Mill asks for the roads to be accepted, Fred can write a letter saying, I examined these things. They're built according to the plans, according to, you know, engineer's specifications, and, you know, the town should accept the road. So, so both Fred and Eric, as the town planner, are representatives and, and the town's representative. So they're there to make sure, um, everything's done right. And so, you know, when I, when I hear things, you know, like that, that, um, you know, Fred is being, you know, Fred's being, uh, you know, let's say, he's having to deal with argumentative people on site, including, you know, the site manager. Um, you know, that's, that's kind of a disrespect to the planning board, you know, to our representatives and to the town. And so, you know, I take it very seriously. Um, you know, the way, the way site meetings are held, um, you know, the site meetings with the town planner and the town's engineer. So, you know, I don't like, you know, what I've been hearing. I just wanted to, you know, say that.
How often is Fred there? What triggers his going out?
Well, Erica just read the list.
Items, is it?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not items in the houses. Like, those will be owned by private entities. It's all the infrastructure that the town's gonna take over the drainage. Um, the town's gonna take over, you know, those, where the, where the water runs off into.
But is he there once a month or is he there as item one gets completed, two gets completed?
You know, the site manager's supposed to call Fred forty-eight hours ahead and said, okay, we're about to pave this road. I, you need to, we're gonna pave it on Friday. Can you come Thursday and inspect that? You know, the base we put down is twelve inches of crushed stone and it's been compacted. I mean, Erica can probably give more examples of that.
Yeah, so basically, I mean, Fred doesn't need to see every single item get installed, but he needs to see enough representation so that he feels comfortable that the roads and the drainage is being installed correctly. So he'll go out, you know, Andy will call him and he'll go out. And if they're putting, you know, um, stone bedding down for the, for the, you know, a drain line, he wants to make sure that it's a certain depth and that he'll see them laying the pipe and then he'll see them putting the sand over the pipe. And those are all things that the town's obviously concerned about because eventually we're gonna own the roads. So, um, obviously, he doesn't need to see every pipe that goes in, but he needs to see enough that he, you know, feels comfortable.
But he's not there necessarily.
So he's there, typically, um, this summer, he's been there, I believe, two to three times a week. And then he also attends our weekly construction meetings.
He's there a lot?
He's there quite a bit.
But is, is he getting called every time or is?
So it's a combination because he is, I believe he is getting called, but he's also going out periodically just to make sure um, that things are getting done correctly.
It's a surprise.
It's a, yeah, exactly.
And that's, so Erica, if you could just talk about your training and education as an engineer.
Sure.
Engineer.
I'm not sure how you want me to apply that to this.
Just, you know, you're under, you know.
No, I mean, that's standard, that's standard protocol is for when, um, a project's getting developed like this. Um, I, when I was an engineer, I was a peer reviewer for the Town of West Portfield. I reviewed all of their stormwater projects, so when a stormwater system was going in, I would go out and do inspections and make sure that how they're installing it is in compliance with the site plans and their rules and regulations.
I don't have any issue with any of that, but the frequency seems alarming. In my business, if, if I'm financing a project and there's an owner's rep and a lender's rep and a town's rep, they're going out once a month and it's in concert with the bank funding a monthly requisition. And maybe that frequency, once a month, is, is not enough. Maybe it's a matter of we need to adhere to Fred getting called out, being triggered by each of these critical events. You know, we can't miss any of the, number one event happens, he needs to come out, number two, but it's not a set schedule. But if, if we're doing a combination and, and Fred is coming out to inspect for all of these critical points and regularly at least once a week, I'm hearing multiple times a week, and doing surprise inspection.
Well, it's not and, and, he's going out two to three times a week and he's inspecting those items as they're being installed. He's not going in addition of two to three times a week. It's two to three times a week and then, um, when we have our weekly construction meetings, he combines the construction meetings with the site inspection afterwards. So that might be like the second or third visit for that week. It kind of gets combined, you know, for both.
My two cents, that, that frequency is draconian. That's ridiculous.
This deals with a road that's gonna be passed to us. I believe that means it's a lot of road, right?
Right.
So it's a pretty big investment.
No, I get all of that, but that frequency is ridiculous. Then just, that's my two cents. I, I'm in the industry, I've watched these things, I, 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 I understand exactly how the mechanics work. That, that's, that's an alarming frequency. I, I can see the frustration. So I, I'm just. I wasn't leading the witness for the question. I, I thought, I thought the answer was gonna be once a week, once every, I, three times a week is ridiculous. That's.
It's not always three times a week. Sometimes it's two times a week, but I think it is imperative for the construction of the roads. Um, there are numerous times when Fred does go out there and things need to be redone slightly, and that's important.
I have tons of sympathy for that, absolutely.
And we need to have these roads.
The inspections need to go well. Um, the requirements by the inspector, by the town, um, need to be followed. To, I, I understand, these are our roads, I get all of that. The frequency is the only thing I have an issue with. That's, that's too much.
I mean, I, I think the import, you know, it's much cheaper if Fred's there and inspects it at the right time than if he's not there and then things have to be dug up and redone, which has happened on this project.
Is Fred's frequency a, is it a correlation with the volume of work that they're trying to do over the summer? Or is this been like this for longer than that?
No, I think it's in correlation with the level of work that's going on. For Andy, his, his inspection.
Would you see Fred do this much?
Well, like when a house is built, there are certain, um, steps to construction. And like when a house is built, the building inspector does not come out and inspect, um, as you're framing the house. He comes out and when you call him and say, we need frame inspection, or we want a plumbing inspection, or we want an electrical inspection.
Milestones.
Wanting milestones. Uh, it's the same with road inspection. Uh, you know, before you start a road, Fred should, uh, needs to see that we brought it down to some proper subgrade and removed all of the, uh, organic materials. He needs to see, uh, pipe that's being installed before it's backfilled. But there are definitely points in time where you don't go to the next step where Fred should see it. Um, the, uh, there has been a significant problem, uh, I mean, not with Fred as a human being, uh, but there is a huge problem here. Um, I have bills that I've been able to pay in the last thirty days for inspections and a review of thirty thousand dollars out of this thirty, thirty yard years. The most I've ever paid in, over a two or three month period is five in any time.
So you feel like he's going out there when there's nothing to inspect?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Do you feel like he's going out there when there's nothing to inspect?
No, no, it's a multiple problem for, I mean, um, we, uh, his two culverts require a structural engineer review. Fred brought in a structural engineer. It was, it, it went on, the, the review prices went on and on and on and on and on, and eventually the guy quit. Um, and we were under the, now we're under the gun to get these culverts in because of the permit. And so now G Z A has been brought in, uh, at my suggestion, um, because they, they can handle it, but, um.
But so, so part of that, you know, you've thrown out a big figure, but part of that payment is not going to Fred, it's going to.
Right, and that's not entirely accurate. I would just like to sort of address what Andy just said. So Fred Hamway did hire a structural engineer to do the review of the culverts, and I know we've had this conversation so many times. The structural engineer, uh, provided, uh, Andy's design engineer with comments and, um, his design engineer didn't address those comments. So that's why it went on for months and months and months because the comments weren't being addressed.
The three engineers couldn't satisfy.
Right, and then the fourth engineer.
Erica finished.
And then the engineer wrote a letter saying he wasn't qualified.
Andy, I'd like Erica to finish.
So I believe it was in June, the structural engineer said, you know what, my, my schedule's changing. I can no longer work on this project. So he opted out. So that's when we hired G Z A, uh, to comment and to finish that review. Now, G Z A had very similar comments to the first structural engineer. I believe you had hot date, the C S I, who's the manufacturer of your retaining walls, hired a different structural engineer to finally come in and answer those comments and then it was addressed and G Z A approved the design, but, um, so.
Two weeks instead of nine months. I mean, every, it, it would be nice if we could have a conversation, I don't know what it is, but it seems like whatever it is, you never have anything wrong. Never. It's always a make. Trust me, a, a, a review engineer shouldn't, it shouldn't have gone on for nine months.
I guess what I remember, you know, with this project, um, you know, probably about a year and a half or two years ago that, um, that Fred wasn't there for important, important parts of the process of paving. And because of that, um, and, you know, I think you said, well, I'm not, you know, that's one of my subcontractors paved that area, I'm not responsible. But anyway, it had to be dug up and inspected and so, you know, so that's been kind of the part of the history of this project. You know, things happen, they weren't inspected at the right time and they had to be undone. And so, you know, I, I think it's much cheaper to have him there than to have to redo things later.
What do you have to say about the fact that in my entire career, you know, this is like five or six times more money than I've ever paid for reviewing and inspections?
Well, it sounds like part of it is due to the culverts.
Then the design engineer, multiple, the design engineer charged me fifteen or a hundred or twenty-five hundred dollars to design it. And thirty thousand dollars having it inspected and reviewed seems a little bit crazy, doesn't it? And then it will end up in nine months. I mean, it could have ended better. I asked, uh, you know, multiple times in the meetings, uh, that we have weekly, I said, bring your engineer, this structural engineer to a meeting instead of doing emails going back and forth.
So, I mean, so we have this thing, he needs forty-eight hours. So it sounds like from that, that maybe you're calling him with twenty-four hours' notice or something like that. Is that an issue?
No, Fred hasn't mentioned it to me that it's an issue because he takes it upon himself to make sure that the review gets done or the inspection gets done. So if he doesn't get a call and so much time has passed, I, my inkling is that Fred then goes out just to check on the site anyway, to make sure that he's not missing certain things.
So communication's important, organization's important in terms of scheduling. Um, so do you have a check tonight?
No, I forgot.
Okay, so that's, you know, that's a big issue.
And do you have any?
Well, the town's holding five hundred thousand dollars to cash. I mean, I can drop it off tomorrow. I just brought it.
You, you don't have your check from here. What else, Erica?
No, I just, I wanted to add that Fred Hamway is not only doing reviews for planning board at this point, he's also doing reviews for conservation. So he's reviewing the wetland crossings, the wetland replication areas, so that adds to the inspection time.
So normally, they would have their own engineer.
But in this case.
Not normally. This is the first time ever that the Concom has had an independent, uh, inspector. My project is getting more screw meat, right?
Okay, but that, they, the Conservation Commission has decided that they need an engineer inspecting these wetland crossings.
Right, right.
Okay, so, so they've.
Is that our practice normally in town?
That's, I think that's a question for the conservation. I assume that's standard practice. I mean, at the company I used to work for, an environmental consulting firm, we had wetland scientists on staff that often went out and did, um, inspections on replication areas. I think it's standard practice.
It's not in this town. This is the first.
I can't speak to that.
Can we ask Carol?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other things related to Fred Hamway?
How do you think the project looks?
Looks awesome.
It's amazing, yeah.
They drove here a couple of weeks ago and they didn't say a lot.
Yeah, they're definitely doing great work. It looks great.
I'm buying that.
So just one thing, Andy, too, about, um, moving forward. Uh, Fred contacted me and said that he receives a design for the second retaining wall for Road A. Now, um, G Z A has a contract out to do that review, but I don't have sufficient funds at this point, so they can't move forward. That's part of the problem, too, that I can't authorize them to move forward until we. So they can't move forward, that's part of the problem, too, that I can't authorize them to move forward until we have fines.
Yeah, there's no.
To do that.
I don't think they even have the design yet to review.
I believe they got it today because Fred sent me an email and he said that they have it and that, you know, he basically asked me if they could.
I'll just run the check tomorrow. If you do a bond reduction tomorrow, you can take it out.
Do you want to do it that way? Do you want to take it from the bond reduction? Because we can do that.
I'm just saying.
There should be some, some significant funds freed up.
So I guess we can move on to the, to the bond reductions.
So Andy's submitted a cost estimate for a reduction in bond. Fred Hamway did a review of that reduction and they came to an agreement on a number for cost, for remaining costs of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. So in your packet, I also included some background information on how the initial bond was established. And basically, the way that it was calculated is they took the original cost estimate from Andy and then.
Can I just go?
Yeah, sorry.
It's not from me, it's from GZA.
Well, it's from your engineer.
It's a design engineer.
Right, from your engineer. And at that time, the other town planner and Conservation Commission reviewed what was already in place for bond for conservation and they determined that there was some overlap in what was being required for bonds. So they subtracted out from the number that Andy's engineer gave to us, which was forty-seven thousand, five hundred. And then they took that number and they multiplied it by one point five, which is like the standard multiplier. And came up with a bond amount divided by the number of lots and that's how they came up with the amount for lot release. So kind of backing into that same calculation.
There was my, everything discussed tonight, that was the curve.
Okay, we can do that, too. Let's, let me just talk about the calculation and then we can get to that. So basically, let's see. So for the new bond, consider, taking into consideration what work's been completed to date. So if you take that hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty and subtract out the duplication with conservation, which was the forty-seven thousand, five hundred, and then you multiply it by one point five, you get a hundred and eight thousand, seventy-five. And then currently, the town has a hundred and seventy-seven thousand and a hundred and thirty dollars in escrow. So if you take that number and you subtract out one oh eight seventy-five, bond to be released is sixty-nine thousand, fifty-five.
And that forty-seven five, Concom is in a separate account.
That's in a separate account for conservation, right. So I know that was a source of concern for you at some of our meetings that we were holding duplicating.
Forty-seven five, they actually have more than that.
They do, but that, that's the amount that in, when the planning department and conservation reviewed the bond, the bonds, that that was the area where there was duplication.
Right, that's because it's from a line item called buttoning up or something. Unless there was another ten thousand dollars.
There was, there was several different lines.
Right, but now, now we have more than forty-seven thousand, five hundred in buttoning up line, that's what I'm saying.
But this is only for phase two and phase four. So I'm not taking into consideration bond money that's been posted with conservation for, you know, phase three or for the other part of phase four. Because the bond money that we're holding right now isn't for those phases, I don't think they really.
Except that this duplication still exists, it's the line item.
I don't know that I agree with you.
Alan, are you up to speed on this? It doesn't seem like it's on the agenda and.
It is.
What's in each of them?
The bond reduction?
No, not, no, Andy's asking about, you know, kind of all the different accounts.
Yeah, I'm not on a cursory level, I'm not.
Yeah, so let's just stick to the bond piece and.
Well, that is the bond piece, it's the calculation of, it's part of the calculation.
Well, I can only speak to what I have for background information and how the original bond.
Couple of year over, we do what we can tonight and then go over.
At some point, that, that's fine, but this is, I can only speak to what I, what I have in file. As of now, there was an agreement that there was forty-seven thousand, five hundred in duplication and that was subtracted out.
Alan, if you're going to get up to speed on that and, you know, come back to us with something, you know, some type of proposal.
Yeah, there would need to, I would suggest putting together another cost estimate that shows where there's the possibility for any more duplication, yeah, so.
So yeah, if we could get a motion, do we need a motion?
Sixty-nine thousand.
We want, yeah.
So what?
Concom was holding four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, you really want to litigate things with Conservation Commission here at the planning board and we're not interested. So, you know, we could just stick to what, what is, what's outstanding in terms of payments to engineers? You know, past payments and what does, what does this engineering firm need to start?
Well, you're not interested, but the covenant requires you to consider.
Requires us to consider duplication, we need to consider that, right.
When you say you're not interested, the covenant that I've signed with the planning board requires us to discuss that.
Yeah, but, so your attorney's here, he's not prepared to kind of lead us through it and I don't see it in any of the documents. So, you know, we're just going to stick with this part, otherwise we just need to have another meeting to do this. You really want to go back to the, kind of the beginning?
I think what, because before the board right now is, based on the documentation we have, they could get roughly a little under seventy grand back in the bond reduction. Andy's contention is that there's some further duplication not represented by the forty-seven five. So you guys will do your coordination to figure out what that is and, you know, how do we have the four hundred thousand, how much more of it can be applied to planning items? And then we can basically run through this calculation again, sound good?
Sounds good.
That sounds good.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so the amount that I requested on August twentieth for consultant services was seventeen thousand dollars. And I can, there's a breakdown in your packet for what that covered.
That's in addition to the fifteen I gave you three weeks ago.
Right, that was for past.
So up to thirty-two thousand dollars. Thirty-two thousand dollars per thing.
So I think we already discussed that and so.
What was your answer? I didn't, we discussed it, but I didn't know what you think, you think, do you have any experience?
Okay, we're going to try and get through this bond reduction, but we're not going to discuss that part anymore. I mean, we had a discussion about it. Do you want to get to the bond reduction tonight?
I do, but I mean, thirty-two thousand dollars in inspections is crazy. If you have any experience.
What do you want us to do about that?
Fred Hamway is coming tomorrow and he's on our agenda and we can have that conversation with him.
Why is thirty-two thousand dollars, if you, if you know anything about construction, it's a crazy number.
Yeah, so, you know, there's this outstanding payment. We can, Fred's scheduled to come to our next meeting.
We can, our next meeting is on September tenth. I don't remember the time exactly, but he's going to come in and he's just going to talk in general terms of when he goes out there, what he reviews. We can, at that time, we can discuss how often he needs to be out there, maybe come to a better decision on that if there's, you know, any disagreement.
So do you want to hold off on the bond reduction, so after we talk to Fred?
Because Fred, a portion of that can go right toward the seventeen thousand.
Okay, but it seems like, you know.
Well, I think what it sounds like is, we have three things that are kind of interrelated, but we really could deal with them separately. We have the bond reduction on the floor tonight, we have payment for services and we have the possibility of another soon bond reduction in case of my redundancies. So, I mean, we could wrap them all up and do it again in two weeks or a month or whatever, but I'm all in favor of tackle and as much as possible. I'd like to see this project done before I leave planning board.
You're here, how long are you on the floor?
I missed the, the original, was it like preliminary approval, whatever it was, but I was on for the final and, yeah.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we all want it done and you're doing, you know, nice work over there, but we don't want it so much that, you know, you're not going to follow the rules, you need to follow the rules.
Well, you had made, going to make a motion for the bond reduction, let's, let's take care of that.
So, so what's, what's the bond reduction amount and then what's the outstanding?
Eight thousand, oh, fifty-five.
That wasn't, it wasn't contingent on anything, right?
I don't think so.
Based on, right, just, yeah. Well, we would, you're talking about taking out the, yeah, 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 you know, direct the plus, I mean, the.
Hamway.
The inspection.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, we're going to subtract. That's going to come out, I mean, that's what I'm proposing.
So can you touch, based on the curb issue?
Oh, sure, sorry, Andy, yeah, you didn't mention that.
It's by the bond, oh, okay.
So there was one item in his, in the cost estimate for the bond reduction after Fred had done his review, line item number seven, furnished and installed bit curve, questionable curve. And then Fred's comments are in red and he said questionable curb installation. So Fred added almost eight thousand back in to the bond to cover that, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five. And basically, there's a portion of curb along Mill Pond Road that was being installed. Fred went out and as he was seeing it being installed, he noticed that it wasn't being installed correctly, that it wasn't being installed on proper base material. I think there was some silt refines accumulated and it was being installed on top of that.
Yeah, Fred, Fred got there with the last like ten feet being installed and saw that the road, that it wasn't up to his cleanliness. So he wasn't sure about the other eight hundred feet that was installed.
So we have a new asphalt road and they're installing an asphalt curb, which is like an extruded piece of pasta. And if you have sand on it, it's not going to stick as well. And so when a plow hits it, it's just going to like come off like a road.
And that was his concern.
That's what Fred's concerned.
However, that was three years ago.
So the curb's been through two winters, so Andy is just, that, he's making a case that.
It hasn't here, it's been there for three years and this was his, you know, he raised the issue three years ago. And at that time, he basically said, well, let's let it go through a winter. And now it's going through two winters, I think the curb is fine, it's been there for three years.
So, so how many, how many houses are on that road and how many people have been living in them for the last two years?
I don't follow it.
Is it getting regular use?
The curb?
Yeah.
Yeah, the roads have been plowed every year for three years.
Are people living there on that?
Yeah.
How many people for the last three years? Just answer the question, how many people are living there on the site, is it site or circle?
Twenty people. But I mean, it's the plow, the road's been plowed every year and there's nothing wrong with the curb.
Well, we'll talk to Fred about that next week. So can we just go through with the, with the amounts minus the seventeen thousand? We'll talk to Fred about that curb next week.
Is there a public vote either?
It's in, in two weeks, September, September tenth. Yeah, so.
Minus seventy-five.
Right, but I, um, Jonathan, do you want to have a motion made that sixty-nine thousand, fifty-five be released? And then once that's released, seventeen thousand of that be transferred into a new escrow account?
Yeah.
I think that's probably how the motion should be said.
John, have you checked those numbers? You're a numbers guy.
I did run the numbers when I got.
To release that.
Being emailed in March, because they look at it and it just didn't make any sense.
It's seventeen thousand, it's a critical amount, it's seventeen thousand even.
And then I did it the right way.
And then if it will be fifty-two thousand, fifty-five, that will actually give back to Andy.
Do you want to make a, make a motion?
Do you want these numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting my handwriting a little messy.
Hundred something thousand, a hundred something thousand.
Okay, so you have the experience on hand?
It's on the left there.
So one seventy-seven, one thirty is what it is, one oh eight seventy-five is what it wanted to be. So I'd like to make a motion to reduce the amount of the bond being held at currently a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars down to one hundred and eight thousand and seventy-five dollars, which is a net reduction of sixty-nine thousand and fifty-five dollars. This reduction is in light of the fact that much work has been completed. And after the bond is reduced, I would further make the motion that seventeen thousand, obviously sixty-nine thousand, one fifty-five is retained in the escrow account for engineering services. Second?
All in favor say aye, aye and against?
Thank you.
You're the man for that job, yes. Thank you, John.
Who seconded that motion, sorry? Oh, thank you for bringing copies, I just realized when I got here that I forgot to print it out, so I really appreciate that. Okay. So back in January, the board approved extending the subdivision approval permit along with the phosphor. Phosphor's been drafted and signed and gone through the appeal period and recorded. So here's the subdivision approval for signature, for review and signature. And town council's reviewed this as well.
Okay.
So we don't have to vote anything, we've already done. Do the current members, whom weren't on the board at that point, sign it as well?
Oh, that's.
No, motion carry, four years, zero made, so technically it should be.
Four signatures, right.
You know, if that's, if that's a question, we could, I could always redraft that and have Jonathan only sign on behalf of the board and then.
I remember voting for it, so I'm comfortable signing.
Yeah, it was in January.
Who actually signs, if it's a matter of January, was Doug one of the ones who approved it that he's.
Yeah, it was Doug.
Who's one of the board's most problematic around.
I remember voting.
Four, you said there's only four of us?
Yeah, there was only four at the meeting, Jonathan wasn't there.
Oh. You skipped this one.
Yeah.
I wasn't there?
You weren't there.
So what are you proposing?
So I'm proposing to, I'm sorry, Alan, to, to redraft this so that it just has one signature. It'll be your signature on behalf of the planning board and then there'll be no issues with that.
I think it's a fine idea.
Apologize.
Just going to help pick you the registrar or whoever.
Because when you get at the desk, it's like, do you want more? You're really good at that.
Make motions on that? And they look and they say, well, you know, Doug, there's other people.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Signatures on here.
So we need a motion?
I would move that the planning board approve the execution of that document based on a redraft which features only the chairman's signature on behalf of the planning board's collective approval.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and against?
Thank you. You guys didn't want to pay your campaign. It's like preseason.
Yeah.
You're fish to foul.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should. Twelve years or so.
See you around, Alyssa.
So our next meeting is September tenth?
So we have a sewer district?
Our last item. So this, this was just something I was looking into. It's, it's been something that I thought about because, uh, you know, when I walk, I, I try and walk a lot on Main Street. But when the water table's high after a big rain, um, you smell a lot of sewer, sewer gas because there are a lot of non-conforming sewer systems on Main Street.
That's, that's the whole thing?
Yeah, like it's, it's probably something that was built before nineteen sixty. I don't know when the standards were updated.
So then on Title V, if they were sold, is that? Unless they sell them, I don't think they need to be.
That's, so basically, I asked, I asked, well, I did a little research. Because when the town, the town built the water treatment facility, which is behind the school, what field is that? Is that in like the old horse field or what do they call that field?
Yeah, I think so. A horse ring or horse field.
Anyway, it's that building that homes out there. Anyway, um, so that, I forget when that was built, but it was, it was definitely overbuilt, and they're kind of different stories as to why. But I talked to D P and it's, it's rated for forty thousand gallons a day, but right now it's being used at ten thousand a day. And that's servicing, uh, Emerson and Florence Sawyer, I believe, as well as.
Oh, I see.
Is that average or is that like peak, I would think would be during school days?
Yeah, so the peak, you know, they said the peak was ten, ten thousand.
So the average is much less?
It's, it's permitted for forty thousand, and it's peaking, it's peaking at like ten thousand.
Okay. And it's what? It's a wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
It's not septic, right?
No, it is. That's what, so it's dealing, not with the, the solids are getting separated and it's dealing. So it's a huge system. Um, it was built big, um, partially contemplating an expansion of the school. But even then, it's, it's huge. Because at ten thousand gallons a day, that's like when all the kids are in school. That's Emerson, Florence Sawyer. It's the library, it's the public safety building and this building.
The Shova does their own thing, right?
The high school has their own leach field. So I believe it's just those, those buildings, so.
So the library and the two schools? That's it?
And the safe, this building, Hilton?
The library included, yeah, because it's wet.
Yeah, library, safe, public safety, fire. Anyway, so it's five buildings. And so even if you expanded, you know, there's a lot of excess capacity. And we know from talking to developers, you know, we, we talked to.
What's that guy's name?
Who's developing the Sweeney property in the forty B there?
Frees?
Or kids? Mark O'Hagan.
Mark O'Hagan. He was saying, the reason why he's building less than he can is that he's doing leach fields rather than water treatment because it's so expensive, um, to build one. Anyway, so we have this huge system. Some people say it was built larger to accommodate, um, these non-conforming systems on Main Street. And I guess the.
Well, so you're saying two things. You're talking about the, you're talking about the residential, but then you're also talking about business? The Freedust property?
No, I was talking about, just, I was talking about Mark O'Hagan's property, just about, yeah, you're right. Talking about, that's the one across from, um.
Long Hill Candy.
Long Hill Candy.
Yeah, that was the part of your sewer district.
No, no. I'm just saying.
Just by comparison, that was a development where he could have done a whole ton of units. He wants to do a whole lot less.
Because of the.
Because the, the cost is prohibitive.
Right, I think he got below the threshold. I guess the point is, is that our system is very expensive to build, and it's also very expensive. I don't have figures, but it's very expensive to maintain annually. And it's, it's working at a quarter capacity. And so I think there's this need, and, you know, I just wanna clarify, I live on almost four acres, so I live on Main Street, but it's not for my benefit. I have a great septic system on, on high ground. But there are a lot of people, a lot of houses, that have small lots, and they're right next to either Great Brook or they're next to, I don't even know what this.
Swamp, whatever.
I don't know what this big swamp is behind, you know, between Pond Park and, um, Salt Box.
Yeah, a couple of them, but right up against it.
So.
So we're under capacity. We've got a town asset. We could utilize it a little bit more. I guess a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Would it be an option for these non-conforming, I don't wanna say it that way. Would it be an option for these subject lots we're talking about with, with their own systems at risk to hook into this town system, or would it be a requirement?
Well, so I know that my.
And can you get revenue?
I know my in-laws in Chelmsford. Um, they used to be on septic, and what they, the town did is they ran a pipe, and then you have to pay to tie into it.
So.
I've heard a couple of things, um, the, the different scenarios that I've heard happen. One is just what you said. They run the pipe down the road. If you wanna be in, great.
You raise your hand, and you're paying a connection fee?
Bingo.
But are you paying a maintenance fee or just a one-time connection fee?
Well, you got a connection fee, and I think it, you know, like some sort of sewer charge.
Yeah. I'm on Hudson Sewer, and I pay a quarterly.
You got one is, they put the pipe down the street.
The sponsor.
So you're already connected, so you didn't have to pay that.
Yeah, that's correct. I bought the house with the connection.
So what do you, give us an idea, what you pay?
Well, I get hopes because Hudson has town water, and I'm not saying it publicly. Hudson has town water. No. Hudson has town water, Hudson has town sewer, Hudson has hydrants. If you're a resident of the town of Hudson, you get all three, and you pay a bill for all three. And they meter your water and sewer, I'm sorry, they charge you for water and sewer based on your metering for water. And your hydrant is a flat fee, something like twenty-five bucks, I think. If you're in Bolton, you're under the protection of the Bolton Fire Department. You're not paying the twenty-five dollar fee. You're just paying the water and the sewer. Some of the people in my neighborhood have Hudson Town Water and Hudson Sewer Connection. Their water is metered, and so their sewer is an actual reading. I have a well. I don't know how many other people in my situation in that, on that street. But I have a well and Hudson Town Sewer, so I get E, estimated, next to my bill. I know, I don't say which neighbor, but I, I know one of my neighbors and what he pays, and he pays X because his is metered. I will tell you what I pay because mine's estimated, and it's something like a hundred eighty-five bucks a quarter. And every quarter over the past nine years, it's gone up by seven, eight percent. It is what it is, and I'd probably rather that over a septic system.
Well, you never, you never have to build, I bet your, your house is worth more because you never have to maintain.
People like it. No, people, and I like it too, yeah.
Like you don't have to pump it out every two years.
But I wish, I wish I could get an actual reading, because I'm a very conservative guy and, and.
Yeah, but I think it's saving on the pumping.
You are, but if mine was actually, you are, but if mine was actually metered, I think I would pay maybe not half of what I'm paying, but probably closer.
And you never have to worry about the dreaded failure.
That's a benefit. So there you go.
So the other scenario.
But I did pay the connection, I did pay the quarterly.
The connection fee plus a maintenance fee is, they run the pipe down the road, and they say, this is a capital improvement to your land, whether or not you're hooked in. So, you know, here's your enhanced assessment.
Well, I've heard it would, it would increase the values of houses along Main Street.
Yeah. Saying optional.
Well, you can talk to people, Lancaster, they went through this. Lancaster, what, maybe about ten years ago, Lancaster was all private. Lancaster came through, I was looking to buy a house on George Hill Road. Lancaster came through and bit by bit started doing the connections. George Hill was next. And the conversation was, yeah, you'd have to pay a large fee. You've got the option to pay. Yeah, so they've got some caseload. I don't know who we were talking to there, but I could look into it. I mean, that's how it worked out for them, how they roll out.
Where does the pipe, the pipe goes from the school, so it must goes in the back of the woods, or is this one probably go down the road, right?
I, I think when they did it, you know, it, it comes down Main Street from the library, and I think they, they brought the pipe down from the safety center to Main Street, the forced main, so it doesn't cut through the soccer field.
I think it's a great idea. It's just, it's something to explore. I really.
Yeah, so Erica did a spreadsheet. I asked her to do a spreadsheet on the lots on Main Street. So basically, based on the bedrooms, you need a hundred and ten gallons of capacity per bedroom. And so she did one side of the street, which, uh, north of Main Street and then south of Main Street. And so we have, you know, this is kind of rough. So we have, we have like seven thousand, eight hundred and six thousand, one hundred and sixty. So even if we were taking care of all of these houses, and maybe not all of them, we need it right now. We have a lot of capacity left over, um, for any addition to the, the school.
But there's no, so if you more than double, double the, you know, whatever it's processing, there's no extra maintenance, wear and tear on the system, like.
Well, I, I see it as, it's kind of like, I don't know if it's like a co-op, but I think it is like a co-op. You're, you're paying, you're probably paying to service the debt, and you're also paying for the annual maintenance. And so, you know, this is one of the ways, like, you know, it would help a lot of people, it would increase their home's values, but it would also reduce government costs, you know.
I think it's a great idea.
Um, so I just wanted to throw it out to the board and see what everybody thought before we.
Like anything else, it's a system that has X amount of efficiency, and we're not using it. And, and one would think by going up in the usage.
Does that system have any room for expansion, or is it is what it is?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the reasons they didn't, you know, talk, you have to talk to old timers why they didn't do this. You know, some old, old timers say, well, the intention was to hook up houses.
Yeah, okay.
That were non-conforming, um, but they sent out a survey, and everybody wanted to do it. But I think it was also including like Flatley Building, like including the businesses, and it was too much. And so they, the, the board of selectmen just said, no way.
So this would just be the non-conforming.
This would just be residential, pre-existing non-conforming, which is basically from what.
Yeah.
You know, so like.
Is, is Flatley non-conforming?
No, they're not.
But I wouldn't, I don't think you need to, and I think it's a little dangerous, it's a restricted against commercial. Maybe, just throwing it out there, maybe you don't need to. Maybe if you just say non-conforming.
Well, one example is like the Cracker Barrel. So they have, you know, that's a business in there. And then there are, I don't know, two or three apartments upstairs.
This is presidential.
But they have a pump tank. So I think, you know, if you talk to them, Eileen, I think the real estate, she'll say they spend like twelve thousand a year pumping that. But, um, but I, I, I think it needs, you know, I think it should be for, you know, pre-existing non-conforming to kind of, we can't throw it completely open or it'll never, it'll never pass.
We'd have to define a district, and it would include Flatley.
But I think, my point, my only point is, I think if you just say pre-existing non-conforming and don't get into specific spot exclusions, you're probably still.
Well, you're not exclusion.
If you say anybody within this map, that's when we pick.
Well, it would be creating like an overlay, like whatever you call it.
It's a, it's a local sewer district, so yeah, we have to figure out.
We didn't define that.
How you define that. I think Harvard just did this in for their, the houses around their town common.
Okay.
Cause like, I don't know if you ever went to the Harvard General Store, you couldn't use the bathroom because they were limited to so many flushes. And so anyway.
Why? Cause the water's right behind it? Or the water table?
No, they just didn't.
Or just a bad system?
They had an old leach field, and now, and they didn't have any room to like, you know, you need to have room for your leach field and then a spare spot, and they didn't have that. So it was a bad, you know, a failing system.
I mean, it would be good to help the cost to lay in the pipe, but.
Anyway, so I just wanted to get everybody's.
Great. And then you could have a smell-free walk?
Well, it's kind of gross. I don't know, they call it miasma in the, like in eighteen hundreds, which is kind of like swamp gas. But you know the smell, like you're driving down Main Street with your window open on a foggy night. I don't know if you've had that experience, but.
Sure somewhere. I understand what you're saying. I don't know if I've had it here, but I have, I'm like, oh, it's just too bad.
Um, so, yeah.
Cool, man.
Great.
I think that's it. So it's a potential bylaw for another.
That's a potential project, yeah. So I, I think it'd be good also to meet with, um, the Board of Health and Conservation Commission because, you know, basically, these are right next to two big wetlands. These underperforming, and I know the Board of Health tries to make, like my neighbor, she had to build one of these incredibly expensive systems because her lot, she was on like less than a quarter of an acre. She did it.
So that's the pump system?
She is a, yeah, she has a pump system. It's pumped up the hill, but it's like one of those kind of, like, looks like.
Oh, what did you call it?
It's like two years later. Well, she, she was at a meeting where it was discussed, and even though she has spent a lot to build this, she said she'd still like to have the light to tie it. She would have to maintain it. It's just, I think, I think it does add value.
Yep.
Um, if you have that right eventually, like when the system fails, I don't think she has a place to, to build another system. And you have to have that, so she, at that point, I mean, probably in thirty or forty years. Great. So anything else you want to bring up?
Uh, yes, one more item. Before we close this up. So I received on Monday a submission for Clinton Savings Bank for special permit. So I don't worry.
Point six, I have.
Yeah.
So we are.
So please, very quick.
No, I haven't contacted them yet, but they, I will, so.
Did you anticipate? That was kind of funny how you.
No, they also made submission for site plan approval to Board of Selectmen. So per our bylaw, and this is what this letter is on the front, Board of Selectmen is now requesting advice from the planning board regarding this project for when they meet with Clinton Savings Bank on the twenty-fifth of September. So, um, I think the schedule, the way it should really, you know, should work or could work is that, um, you guys take this home, hopefully have a chance to review it, and then on September tenth, come back with your advice for the Board of Selectmen, uh, for their, for their meeting on the September 10th. And then we're also gonna be meeting with Clinton Savings Bank on the twenty-fourth. Um, that's when we'll have that public hearing.
So for their special permit, they want our input, but then we are gonna work on the.
And then we'll have the special permit, uh, and we'll have the public hearing with Clinton Savings Bank on the twenty-fourth, um, at which time, and actually, I guess this is up to you guys. I can invite the D R B at that meeting? Or since we're gonna be talking about it September tenth for site plan approval, do you want me to bring in D R B at that point?
Yeah.
That might be helpful. Um, okay, I'll do that.
All, invite all members?
I will. I'm not sure if any of them can come at this point, but I'll invite them all and see who can come. Um, and then I can also give you an update on the changes that were made, and, cause I have meeting minutes from those meetings and all of that.
So you went to them?
I went to them. They were very productive. It was a very helpful process. I think Clinton Savings Bank found it helpful as well. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted, um, to mention to you is, uh, peer reviews for this project. Now, I didn't know how planning board, and maybe you need to look at it before you can make this determination whether or not, um, you would like to have a peer review, do stormwater and the traffic. Cause we did have a, we do have stormwater, a stormwater report and a traffic study for this project that was submitted along with this application.
So as part of the process, they provide money for peer review?
We send it out, appear, yeah, another consulting firm.
And if we don't spend that money, it just goes into the channel fund?
No, 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 there's, then they don't have to provide the money. It's just a ser, if we want that service, then they'll, they.
And what is a third-party review of the traffic study that was presented?
Exactly.
Okay.
Personally, I don't necessarily think it's needed for this project. It's a relatively small project. I felt very comfortable reviewing stormwater for the board. Traffic study, I haven't looked at in detail, but I can't imagine numbers changing all that much considering.
Can you send us that traffic study?
Um, I, I have a copy of it in my office. It's rather large, so I told them only to give me two in case we wanted to send it out for peer review. Um, I can see if, uh, if the company has a PDF of it. It's a large document, but, um.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through.
So. Okay, John?
I heard it. You guys saving today? Why do I want to read this on the giant traffic study? I'm not in the topic.
It's like phase one, there's probably twenty pages of conclusions, two hundred and sixty pages of saving board map.
Like I said, I don't know that it's necessary, but that's your call. And, uh, just, I just wanted, and I just wanted to bring to your attention too that Clinton Savings Bank has a sales agreement with the owner of that property, and, um, they were supposed to have all their permits in line by October first. If they go beyond October first, then they have to pay the owner five thousand dollars each month that they go over that date. So, I'm really helping Clinton Savings Bank move this forward. They've been really great at this point. They've been very assertive with this, you know, every application that they've provided. You know, the applicant calls me almost every day, so they've been very good about, um, providing what we need.
So, did you share with them the comments from the mobility committee?
I did not share the, I will, I'll forward that to the applicant. I did tell them that pedestrian mobility is an initiative for the planning board, and that's something that they're going to probably need to think about. And, um, the applicant has already started working the numbers for what it would cost to do sidewalk along the frontage, what it would cost for sidewalk from Clinton Savings Bank all the way down to Milton Otis Park. I think, um, they're open to the idea, so they know that it's out there.
That's my biggest desire, I think that'd be awesome.
I think it's going to be good for them, for the community.
No, that's a great thing to, to ask for and to try to get, yeah.
Get walking, walking traffic to their bank.
Yeah, we want, that's great, like, can you walk to the bank? Especially if you work in, yeah, if you work in those places, you know, an office park.
Yeah, there's got to be more employees with the assisted living, so.
So, they're under the gun from a timing standpoint, October, it'd be a more of a good idea to shit with...
So, you want to wrap it up by the twenty-fourth, is what you're saying?
Well, not necessarily, because that's, that's your decision. If you don't feel comfortable, then obviously you shouldn't make... But I think, you know, at this point, they've worked, um, hard to get to this point and, um...
Is the demolition delay up?
No, that was up in June, yeah. And they've already gone through the Z B A process for the variances and special permit for that, and then they've met with, you know, they were very happy to meet with the design review board, so at this point, it's, it's just planning that's left, oh, and they also went through conservation, so.
So, when did, they don't tear it down till all this is done, then?
Well, they don't technically own the, right.
Until October.
This is your due diligence period, so, until October.
Does somebody still live in that building?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know, like somebody renting or something.
Couple of squatters.
I think they moved out once, when it got really serious in the spring.
Squatters.
Changed the furnace right now.
So, maybe in terms of the consultant, whether or not to hire a consultant, maybe I'll, I'll send an email next week sometime and just see if you guys had a chance to take a quick look at it and...
It's going to be a drive-through?
I guess there is, in the back, there's going to be an ATM machine and two...
There's a summary of traffic.
Is there?
No, it's very good.
Um, there might be, I know there's a environmental impact, or a impact statement.
Just a, no ice, lollypops.
So, do we have, we have a hearing?
Right, so I'll schedule the hearing for, um, September twenty-fourth. I've already sent the legal notice to the paper.
So, meeting tenth with the design review board, hearing twenty-fourth, meeting the twenty-fifth?
Well, the twenty-fifth is with Board of Selectmen for site plan approval.
Right, right, right.
So, and then, like I said, the October first day.
Yep, okay.
Good.
I'd love to make this motion to adjourn.
Yes, please.
Uh, make motion to adjourn, please.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against?